And I think what Stephen had sent was a summary of just the...
That's correct.
...of each one of the permits. And there's one, Mr. Tinkler had a question about Stephen I mentioned to you. Timber Ridge initially, members of the board were going through the process of submitting a response to South Florida in a timely fashion, if you recall, just going back a bit. This is pre-enforcement notice that the district received on April 3rd, 2018, that please, you know, give us your respon-- he's not responding to our prior notices. Within 15 days, please tell us how you're addressing these issues. So, it was a detailed six-page letter with attachments that said we've submitted 11 so far on April 2nd, 3rd, and 6th. We have about 23 permits for which we think there are issues, and these are the permits, and these are the issues. Attached are the permits that we will bring to the board on April 19th with a recommendation for approval and execution of the forms to submit those to South Florida on April 20th. And so what you all received was the list of the permits that we had met, Exhibit 3 to the letter. One of those, or two of the permits involved, and as the letter was being written and prepared, we went back and forth in various iterations, and we had questions as to which permits would be, the permits which issues remained and permits that were okay. One of them was, two of them were Timber Ridge. And Timber Ridge is now on the list of those to be accepted. And Stephen, I can recall why we took it off the list for those that may have questions for that goes to be accepted.
We took it off the list because all of the facilities are within flat easements to Gateway, and Gateway's been maintaining the system for years.
The lakes, the street drainage, and the pipes going from the streets to the lakes?
That is correct.
It was two. It was Timber Ridge and Royal Green.
Well, this is Timber Ridge I'm talking about specifically.
Right.
Royal Green is still on there as a problem, not a problem, but a questionable one.
Yeah, I don't believe we, I don't have application documents to transfer Royal Greens.
Royal Green is still on there?
I don't think so.
It should not be. Okay, they were, they were ones, two specifically, that were on a separate identification that came out for some reason that I didn't understand then.
There were two permits for Timber Ridge, and they're now on the list of permits for your side of the engineering.
So, right. So, we're saying right now, Stephen, then Exhibit 3 identifies those that when your email came out to us, well, you must have sent it to staff, staff sent it to us. Every one of them I looked at had a transfer TOE of 891107-10, as I recall. They...
Yeah, we spoke about this yesterday afternoon. I printed what I sent to Chris, I mean, you can take a look at it for yourself.
But they were all the same, is my point.
They're all correct, too, so I don't know what happened, and...
But my line is we have 30 different ones...
That's correct.
That we are, 34 different ones that we have identified, that we're now ready to sign and authorize market to sign today and have to then by what, close business tomorrow?
Yes.
Is that...
Obviously get it early and then close the business. I would, as soon as possible tomorrow.
Well, I agree. But is that what we're doing?
There's 30, yes.
30 or 34? My Exhibit 3 shows 34. Is there another one that I missed? My last attachment, Exhibit 3...
Well...
I just want to make sure I'm understanding what we're approving.
Right. We're transferring 30 of them. I have them all right here. I have them with the backup information, the plaids, the plans.
30 of them?
Thirty of them, ready to go.
Okay, so once I have on my list of 31, 32, 33, 34, where do they fall?
No, I guess maybe an easier question is, just for clarification, the letter that went out to South Florida, we had Exhibit 3. That was a list of those that we recommend to be accepted. There are 33 listed permits on that Exhibit 3.
Okay.
So, of those 33, the question is, we have 30 forms. Where did the other three go?
I know we had a couple of different iterations of Exhibit 3 going around, but the one I sent out only had 30 on it, so...
Well, I know a lot of this has been done very quickly, very hastily.
Yeah.
So, that means some stuff's gonna fall through the cracks, but I just want to make sure we're on, in my opinion, thin ice with those people to begin with, and the last thing I want to see is a fine.
Yeah, true.
So, I'd like that clarification of those, which ones we'll check off and verify.
I know...
If we need to get other ones up here to have, or we, we have the forms, so we can fill them out ourselves.
Right. All these 30 are good to go, there's no issues. One idea that I removed from an earlier copy of Exhibit 3 was for Walden Lakes, and I had some drainage improvements on Gateway Boulevard. And I pulled it from the exhibit because, you know, Lee County now has Gateway Boulevard, so we need to address that separately.
Yeah, by way of example, I don't...
Mr. Guy has a question.
Right. Just, I think what might be helpful for the board's final discussion is for Stephen to take a minute and go through what was on Exhibit 3 by way of example. I just noticed, in the cover letter, we tell South Florida that we have one permit for Gateway Boulevard that has, will require additional time. That permit number also shows up as one that we said we would send.
Okay.
So, we need to take that off the, we will send them list.
Correct.
And clarify, and that explains one of the permits. And so what we're going to suggest is, after the board has questions, that Stephen take a few minutes and go, and go check. Yes, and then come back to the board. Sorry, Mr. Guy.
I could go along with that.
Madam Chairman, this is very tiring, and it's tiresome, and it should have been done before. Why don't we just sign the darn things except for Area 51, or wherever the heck that thing is on the other side of 75, and be done with it? This is ludicrous. How much are we paying our lawyer and our engineers to work on this minutia? It's crazy. We've got big problems to work on, as you've heard from our audience earlier tonight. And I'm frankly tired of listening to them reading in my agenda all of this page after page after page of stuff that puts me to sleep. We need the professionals to do their job, and we need to sign it and get it behind us.
Well, that would've been good, Bill, but that should've been done years ago.
Well, it's never too late to do the right thing.
And the attorney, thank God, the attorney and the engineer are doing it to make sure that we don't get in hot water.
We're gonna be in hot water if we don't sign those things.
You don't sign them blindly, though.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Guy, I understand your frustration, and my, one of my roles is to protect the interest of the district and give guidance and advice, my legal team. As the permits that were listed in here from an engineering perspective and other perspective, there are issues that, in my opinion, is not appropriate for the district to accept. First, some of them aren't even ready to be accepted because they're not finished. Others have substantial issues, like Hampton Park is listed in here as some of the permits that we should not accept. So, I would respectfully request that the board, once Stephen reconciles the 30 versus 33, get those underway, get them into South Florida. This has been lingering since, for a number of years, particularly since October of last year. It's been lingering, lingering, and unfortunately, we hadn't engaged in a fire drill the last week and a half to get this done. This took up an extraordinary amount of time to make sure that we, that our systems out there that South Florida has indicated we should accept, and we don't have any facilities, we're not operating them. And it's just a matter of, let's get the record straight from both, all parties' perspectives, so we have a good team, right? And I understand your frustration, I'll leave you with that. So, I would re...
Apparently you don't.
Chris, did we get any kind of a response after you sent that letter off?
It just went out yesterday. I've had, I had a discussion on the phone with the regulatory staff.
About it, Chris?
Sorry, I had a discussion on the phone with the regulatory staff today, and, you know, told them what was coming up. Actually, taking the 30 forms that Stephen sent over, they've been scanned and ready to transmit after board approval. The difference in the 30 versus the 33, I don't know, I'd have to look at the list myself.
Well, I totally agree with what Tony was saying. Stephen, go outside, take this list of whatever the latest Exhibit 3 is, cross-reference that with the letter, cross-reference that with the TOEs, that we need to be able to authorize market to sign, so that we get those things to South Florida tomorrow.
And before you do that, Mrs. Sawyer, did you have any questions for Stephen?
No, I, well, I do have one question, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So, there, this, is this gonna prevent us from being fined? That's what I'd like to know.
Hopefully, that's our intent of doing all this work and running lawyer.
There's no guarantee, but it shows good faith, in my humble opinion, a good faith response, to respond to something that we've not responded to since last December. And now we're on it.
No.
We'll see you in a, in a...
All right.
Thank you.
And do we have anyone here? Is anyone from staff here? Is anyone still here that it was needed, a hand? Take the numbers back and forth.
I've got the list, and we put them together ourselves, and the three of them, I don't know which street we had, but we had 34 originally, went down to 33 on Exhibit 77, and over 30 on those forms, so look at it.
Stephen, we'll go over second now.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I didn't understand was when we got, all the board members got a copy of the letter from Tetra-Tac, my attachment had 30 or 33, I didn't count them all, but they were all the same permit.
Enough.
They were all the same permit.
Enough, enough, enough.
You don't tell me enough.
I'm telling you enough.
Well, you can tell me all you want, but I'm not gonna listen.
You never listen, that's part, that's part of the problem.
Don't go there, Bill. Chris, do you know what happened on that?
Well, you can't listen to the clock at the same time, I understand that.
We're waiting for...
I believe I had a question to our district manager. Did, did the wrong ones get submitted to staff?
No. It must've been a computer issue, because there were 30 different forms, and I checked all the permit numbers myself, and I actually signed all those today in anticipation of the board.
I thought what might've happened is that somebody was copying them, thought they were all the same, because they came out all of a sudden, that's what I was worried about.
We'll wait for Stephen to come back. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the admin side and Commons Pool site zoning and planning.
Hello, board. We've got David Douglas and Associates here today, and Dave's here with his team to talk to you about what we can do with the site we have here and also over at the Commons Pool. Thank you, Mike. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. For the record, my name is David Douglas, David Douglas Associates Civil Engineers and Land Planners. A little background on David Douglas, I've been practicing engineering in Lee County since 1979, and as a professional engineer for the last 34 years. I'm currently the President of David Douglas Associates, which was incorporated in 1996. We've been asked by Gateway Services Community Development District to look at a limited due diligence report on two properties within Gateway. One, the property that we are currently in here, 1.92 acres, we call that the Gateway Utilities Facility Parcel, and we're gonna speak to the Gateway Commons Park Parcel, which is a 15.8 acre parcel where the pool is located. Our due diligence effort here looks at researching and reporting findings on current zoning resolutions on these two parcels, the DRI that controls all of Gateway, any administrative amendments and deviations that were done within Lee County, development orders through the development services of Lee County, to determine allowable uses for the future of these two parcels, specific subdivision regulations and plaids, approved DOs for Gateway Commons Park, comp plan amendments, comp plan overriding, comp plan controlling factors, et cetera. We're gonna look at, we looked at code for code violations, and we delved into the South Florida Water Management Permit Requirements that would control both of these properties. I have with me here today Linda Stewart, she's a certified planner, American Institute Certified Planners, and I also have Jesse Gill, who is a professional engineer registered in the state of Florida. I'm gonna introduce them, and they're gonna go into both of these properties in a little more depth. Our intent was to be able to uncover, find regulations that control these two parcels, uncover specific conditions that would allow us to, or allow the CDD to evaluate future development on these parcels, and see how they could further meet the needs of the community. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Linda Stewart. Thank you very much.
Hi, good afternoon, Linda Stewart, David Douglas Associates. You all have the printouts, and for the audience, it's on the screen for you. These are the two parcels that we were to look at, one being the park on the north side of Hampton Park, and the second being the area that we're situated in right now for the Gateway Utility Facility property. These parcels are located within several different sub-districts. We have the Gateway Services CDD, we have the Planted Unit Development, the PUD zoning, which controls, we have the sub-district for both of the parcels in the PUD, which is a park utility district, and the future land use for the overall Gateway is a new community future land use category in the Lee County Comprehensive Plan. First, we'll look at the Gateway Utility Facility, which is where we are currently. The property is 1.92 acres. It currently has a 6,000 square foot office and maintenance facility located on the property. It has a development order that was issued back in 2004 through Lee County that had a 1,500 square foot building that was approved, the current 6,000 square foot building, and also attempted to retain another modular that was located south of this current building. The 1,500 square foot storage building and fuel station, it was noted on the Bellmore that were not constructed, only the 6,000 square foot building. The areas in red are the items that were approved that were not constructed. In order to continue with any improvements to be placed upon the property, another development order would need to be obtained from Lee County and will put up any buildings, since development orders have expiration dates, and this has exceeded that timeframe for any of those additional facilities to be put into place. This is an ingress egress and utility easement that surrounds the property. This was between the CDD and Lee County when the property was split in order to give Lee County the wastewater treatment plant property to the east. That was done in 2002 through a limited review development order. In this easement, which is located within your reports, we put a copy of it in there for you, it gives Gateway the ability to construct some improvements within the easement area, which currently contains some parking spaces that are on the east side of the property that are really in Lee County's side of the property line, but it does give you the ability to be able to place those in there for future development that would probably be helpful for you to, in order to put more facilities on your property. And next is the water management system, which Jesse Gill will go over for you.
Can we ask the questions of the goal?
Sure. Yes.
The site right here, we've had talks about the possibility of expanding this building and/or an adjacent building. Any expansion of this building or adjacent building, going back to Lee County, will the fact that the property line of Lee County is a step outside the door to the east area have any influence or any decision on what they'll let us do? In other words, is that a conflict that's going to haunt us?
You have a 25-foot setback for anything that you place on the property, so for new buildings that are placed on there, you'd be subjected to the 25 feet.
Was that 25 feet waived to build this building?
That I am not aware of.
That's what I'm worried about.
Right. If you do anything to this building, you, right now, will be grandfathered. It is here, it is placed here, it can remain, as long as you do not make any alterations to it.
Could that be internal?
Internal is fine.
Internal's fine.
Right. I will verify that with Lee County.
What my concern is, is we going down the road thinking that we can do something on this side and finding out that because of something falling through the cracks, and things fall through the cracks in Gateway real hard.
Right.
Will that come back and haunt us, that this building is built way too close to the property line?
Right now, it is grandfathered.
Right now, it's grandfathered?
Yes.
And I have a question, so, and you don't have to answer this now, but it probably will be a follow-up. The fact that we're grandfathered in, what modifications to this building would be considered in scope of, or in the realms of what would be grandfathered in? So, for example, if we add it on, if we extend it one way or another, is, would that...
No, you cannot enlarge...
You can't, you can't, I'm sorry.
Right, you cannot enlarge an inconsistency.
Okay. Say that again.
You cannot enlarge an inconsistency.
Then that's informality.
Right.
Okay, so, making an L out of this, and we're extending it for an additional bay, anything that's external to this building is basically, no, no, not on the table.
Correct. Lee County could then make you adhere to the 25-foot setback. And with this being a small irregular site, it's not difficult to improve that 25 feet.
What about it?
You could go through...
What about the possibility of us purchasing 25 feet to the east?
Of Lee County's property?
Yes. It's a road.
Right, that's, that's encumbered in the ingress and egress utility easement.
But my question is, if we would own that 25 feet?
Right. Then you would be in compliance, yes.
Okay. That's an option.
If you physically moved the property line with a purchase, the 25 feet would be from that new property line.
Yeah, we wouldn't do anything, you'd just buy the ability to do something to this building.
And the fact that you've already got an easement there, there's some, there's some negotiating power in there, because it's gotta remain as an ingress and egress.
All the county wants is to get from A to B.
Right. And there are other options, too. You could go through administrative amendments with Lee County in order to reduce that setback requirement for the area.
But anything that we build that was unattached to this building, like a second, a second building?
Right.
Would, that we, since we're not affecting this building, we wouldn't have to worry about it.
Correct.
You just have to meet the 25-foot setback.
Chris, you looked at those, this is the first time I've seen those four red squares on any drawing whatsoever, that somebody had and envisioned an expansion here. I've never seen, has anybody else seen?
No, but it makes sense when you look at the, you know, it's like, oh, now, now this is submitted to the madness.
Yeah, I'm wondering, have we looked at this as, before we go off and, let's say, say that we want to negate something, and we looked at it closely after, first time I've seen this. Has staff looked at, has any of this, let's say, put it in the category of salvageable? Or is it just stuff that no longer will work?
Oh, it was originally envisioned as being a total utility compound, that's why you have the fuel depot and that, and not as an administrative office, it was a utility service for the wastewater plant district.
Can you say that one more time? This building was, was intended to be a utility?
Utility office, you know, field office, because there's the wastewater plant, that's what it was, for your plant operators, your equipment, your chemical storage, and your fuel for your trucks.
And if we would want to, just carrying this forward, if we would want to go in and expand our current thinking that Joe Zerbo's talked to us about, those things you're gonna need.
Well, if we adhere to this model, with our plan that we had talked about in the past of relocating the administrative side...
Someplace else.
Then there's really not much additional modifications to...
Correct.
To this building, but it does open up enhancements to plan, which I would imagine is probably favorable to utilities organization with the way it's set up.
I just find it amazing that this is the first time this drawing has popped up in at least 12, 13 years I've been looking at stuff around here. Never seen this document.
Yeah, this is interesting.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Director Jesse Gill. Let me talk to Linda about the water management system. First, I'll kind of discuss the overall, how the two parcels are tied in. The master system was conceptually approved back in 1985, which handled drainage for about 6,700 acres, 5,300 of it approximately was set for development. The public works parcel and the Gateway Commons Parcel are in Systems 5 and 4 respectively. In the permit that's noted on the bottom of the chart, the table, it provides the current at that time and projected building in other impervious areas that were accounted for in the master system to provide water quality attenuation for the 2,500 or 3-day storm event. As you can see, commercial general, which is what this parcel would fall into, was provided for 50% impervious, whereas the parks would provide for 30. So, getting into what we're calling the Gateway Utility Facility, this facility here, the modification was filed in 2004. As you can see, there was, there was two buildings that were proposed, one was existing since that time, one of the buildings was not constructed, and the other one was either demolished or removed. This site does provide a half inch of pretreatment. Apparently, based on the plans that were submitted, there was 50% more than what was required. The minimum floor, finished floor elevation, as you can see, is 27.3, with the existing site elevation somewhere 26, 26 and a half, so there's not a whole lot of fill that would have to be brought into the site should you construct another building here. Just looking at the 50% impervious threshold, you've got, looking at, you know, we ran some estimates based off of the aerial, you know, you've got upwards of 9,000 square feet of potential impervious beyond what you have now. And there is also some potential to reconfigure the site should you want to expand it to make it more efficient for the intended use, unless you look at the other location for your administration building. So, this kind of shows you an existing and what was originally proposed, we're just kind of putting them side by side to give you a visual. The table below, which is also contained within the report and your presentation handouts, provides the breakdown of what was previously permitted and what is existing today to kind of give you an idea of what the potential is to do with this site.
Can you read, go back to that slide, can you read, I can't see it on this or blow it up, what's that diagonal line that juts right below the lowest rectangular structure that went and built? Is that an easement, a utility easement?
On the backside?
Yes, on the south side. What's that diagonal line? Looks an awful lot like a utility easement of some sort.
You're talking about on the plan or on the...
On the plan view.
I'm gonna have to grab my other plan.
That, if we can blow that up. This...
Do you want to run through it here?
Yes. That's got a major...
So, if you look at, if you look at the image, what he's saying is, if you follow the yellow line on the south side, where that yellow line is, where it kind of goes like this, on your, on your engineering...
Johnson's drawing.
On Johnson's drawing, there's a dotted line right under it.
Sure looks like a utility. I guess you need that set of drawings to read what it says, that print's way too small for me.
I can provide you the plans right there. Just, just so I'm clear...
I wonder if it's a sanitary sewer line?
Are we referring to this line here?
Yeah, it's a...
Okay, that is actually a utility, it's not denoting an easement.
Was it a sanitary sewer, storm sewer, what?
That is a reused name, and then there's also a forced name that parallels it. So, those are just two facilities there, the dotted lines are indicating the two facilities.
Reused name. Go back to your mic.
That's a stupid...
Yeah, but this is... Okay.
Go back to the right mic, the color more. Since it's on our south exposure, I don't know that it makes a, we don't own any more property anyways, and that make any difference.
Let me show it on the slide that's up right now, that those utilities that Jesse's referring to may be within that purple easement.
That's what I'm guessing.
And that's what it looks like it's showing to me. And that makes sense with the reuse and the forced name that would be there.
I can understand the reuse, I sure don't understand the forced name. I can't think of any forced names around here that go across that track.
Now, these aren't as-built drawings, these are design drawings. We don't have access to the as-built drawings.
And as we know, there's four buildings that aren't, that aren't on there on that drawing, so very, very well may not be some of that utility as well.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? If I've done this. As far as traffic is concerned, Socker Drive is a private local road. The TIS analysis would occur at the project entrance at Socker. Due to the small size, the expected addition, and low existing traffic volume, the roadway improvements would not be anticipated. It's, it should be noted, too, that the, the traffic... It should be noted, too, that the traffic impact statement requirement was waived originally because they were relocating buildings once, when the property was sold. So there was no net increase in building size or number of employees or intended use. So there was actually an email and response letters that waived that. So if you stayed within that threshold of the original buildings, you might have the opportunity to waive that requirement as well. If you went beyond that, you'd likely have to do your standard traffic impact statement. And the, based on my understanding, the bulk of the traffic happens with the soccer fields when there's activities going on there. Well, that's not typically during a peak hour of time when you're typically operating. It would be more after hours. Want to hand it over to Linda again?
To complete the tasks for the due diligence report that we researched for this parcel, this parcel is not in a recorded subdivision plot. We discussed the 25-foot minimum building setbacks. They do have a requirement in there that if your building is higher than 25 feet, that you have a one-foot additional setback for every two feet of building height that you go over the 25 feet. Density is not applicable to this site since it's not a residential district. The 2004 development order, we spoke about the parking spaces that were allocated for the site. In Lee County ordinance 9819, which is also attached in your report booklet, it states that the site must have a landscape screening along soccer drive that fronts along soccer for an average height of six feet above grade.
Is that the berm?
That can, the berm can be part of it, and then with anything that's on the berm, the total height needs to be six feet for the screening.
If you see that, it's waiting to be three feet.
Well, whatever your surveyor shot the elevation at, then, you know, you would need to maintain some sort of vegetation along the top of the berm to-
Pollard.
For the six feet. There are no current code violations on the property, and the FEMA zone is X, which means there's no minimum floor elevation established for the property. So for conclusion, for the utility site, you have the potential to accommodate the additional 1,500 square foot building that was previously approved. However, the permitting through Lee County and the Water Management District would be required in order to proceed with that. With additional design efforts, our belief is that there's sufficient area for additional building in impervious area. How much would be dictated by the design and the permitting process of what you would like to put on the property?
So in your opinion, as a utility site, as it was originally intended, an additional 1,500 square feet could be added to the site?
Yes.
And keep it as a utility site, which would then basically leave us with the option of an administrative area someplace else?
Yes, and we'll discuss that when we discuss the park parcel.
And Linda, and I think what we're saying also, as Jesse pointed out, from a water management standpoint, if you process back through the county with the development order, there is more impervious allowances that were built into the water management beyond that 1,500 square feet. So if there was a desire to reconfigure the site and get more administrative building here, or maintenance facility, or whatever, to reshape what we, you saw in that old development order, you have some more imperviousness that was already built into the water management permit to exceed that. You just go through the development order process and-
What you're saying is we have some plans though?
Yeah, I think so.
Now we will talk about Gateway Commons Park. Gateway, the site itself is 15.8 acres. Currently, there is a pool, clubhouse administration area in the entrance, which was phase one of the original development order for the property. The existing development order was done in 1994. It approved for a pool, sports fields, tennis courts, bocce courts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Say that again. It was approved for bocce courts in 94?
Yes, they actually had-
Just pick that up.
One of the concepts had bocce courts on it. They had an amphitheater. They had meeting and administration rooms on the property. And there is a 30% open space requirement as it's being developed. This was the plan by Paul Montez back in 1994. This isn't the concept that shows the bocce courts. They had clay tennis courts up along Gateway Boulevard, and the area that's shaded is what was constructed. And as with the utility site, since this is an older development order, in order to construct anything else on the property, you would have to get another development order and water management permit in order to do so.
Say that again, please. In order to-
In order to construct anything else on the property other than what's existing, another development order for Lee County and water management permit would need to be obtained.
You modify the existing water management permit.
Correct.
What the issue was and the challenge to you all, I imagine you're great folk, you're going to answer it.
Yes.
Is we want to know, can we build an admin building on this site without a nightmare of waivers and zoning changes and all that?
I will get to that.
The rest of it's superfluous at this point.
I know. I know. That's what you really want to hear. We'll let Jesse speak to the water management real quick, and then we'll get back to answering the question that everybody wants to ask.
I'm just going to keep the suspense going and start talking about some water management. So this particular site was modified 94, as Linda mentioned. It contained a lot of other, two other basements, including amenities. It provides conveyance only, no pretreatment. Just looking at the water management, the backbone system, you have the opportunity for 30% impervious. So that gives you about 3.6 acres of additional impervious area to work with. The minimum finished floor requirement for the master permit was 26.3 NABD. You'll notice that the existing site is higher than the permitted finished floors because your finished floor of your pool is up in excess of 30. This gives you just a perspective of what was proposed and what exists today. The bottom left-hand side again provides you just with some information on what was previously done and what exists today. As far as traffic, gateways and arterial road, you currently have a left end and a right end turn lanes. At the time of the development, the analysis of the lane capacity could be required. There wasn't a traffic impact statement that we were able to uncover with the original build-out. It could have been due to the swap at one time. I believe this was going to be a residential development, and then it was swapped with another property become a park. So they may have had the infrastructure done at that time by the turn. I'm going to turn it back over to Linda again to give you some more additional information.
The number of impervious, 3.6?
Additional.
Additional.
Additionally, yes.
So that'd be what, 150,000 square feet? Are, what would fall relative to sports? Tennis courts fall as impervious?
Yes.
Okay. Baseball, softball would not, obviously.
Correct.
Building and additional parking would?
Yes, sir.
So we got 130,000, 140,000 square feet to play with, max. Can that be waived?
Well, that's just based on what your backbone system provides for you. If you want to go beyond that, you just provide additional water quality attenuation prior to going into the master system.
That's a problem.
Any other questions regarding the water management? I'm going to turn this over to Linda.
She's afraid. Okay. As with the other site, to answer the remaining questions from the due diligence, this property also is not within a recorded subdivision plot. It is, since it's in the Park Utility Subdistrict in the PUD, it is also subjected to the 25-foot building setback from the property lines. They also have a 50-foot setback for buildings from any arterial, and the gateway being an arterial, it would be subjected to that as well for the main structures. Density is also not applicable since this is a park site, not dwelling units. The 1994 development order had 97 parking spaces allocated throughout the entire site. We are not able to ascertain your parking needs since we are not aware of what specific facilities you want to put out there. And Lee County, in your PUD, it states that any parking and landscaping is subjected to current LDC codes. Well, the parking requirements in Lee County were updated a year or two ago, and any specificity for how many spaces there are for tennis courts, for swimming pools, is no longer in the code. So this would be something that we would have to have a meeting with Lee County and sit down and have a discussion and come to an understanding of parking requirements for the specific elements you put out there. We would be able to discuss with them some internal capture reductions. As, since it's a private site, then we could get some reductions for pedestrian usage and not have to have as much impervious area taken up by parking spaces out there, hopefully. The 1994 development order, also we have on the north and west side, since they are bounded by roadways, they would require a type D buffers. U-Lake would have the littoral zones. Those were indicated on the landscape plans in the 94 development order plans. We found no code violations on the property, and this is also in zone X with no minimum floor elevation established.
Linda, type D buffers, 15-foot?
Yes.
Okay.
And the no minimum floor elevation, that's in accordance with FEMA. Your water management permit, as Jesse referenced, will still control those finished floor elevations.
Where are you saying the buffers are required?
Along the roadways. So on Gateway Boulevard to the west and Gateway Lakes to the north.
Which is Hampton Park, right.
Yes.
So the Gateway Boulevard being the arterial would require the 50-foot setback from there right away?
Yes, for buildings, not for tennis courts. Right.
So you put the parking out in front of a building?
Correct.
And or bocce ball court or whatever.
Yes.
And just keep the 15-foot buffer up against the gateway and then let everything come behind that.
And to kind of move this along, I skipped ahead and I read the last page, and it looks like you really haven't determined whether we can build an administrative building there or not.
No. This is something that would have to be determined. So everybody can see the news.
Which one's this?
I know. The detailed parking and landscaping, as I've discussed, without understanding what you specifically would like to put out there, we cannot answer that. As far as a standalone administration building and it being allowable to use, it's unclear at this time. Lee County Land Development Code says administrative office is approved only as ancillary use to a clubhouse and not noted for a standalone use.
That's what I was going to say.
So you had a property manager-
All can join, right? So it's an administrative and recreational facility.
Yeah, mixed use.
Right, but it's ancillary to the clubhouse. So it'd be, you know, if you had a property manager or something, you know, it's not, it'd be a small area. It's not the principal use. It's ancillary to a clubhouse.
For example, if we wanted a meeting room for our community.
Correct. Correct.
And I think what-
It's critical that we know the answer to this. Do we need to have a meeting with Lee County?
That would be my suggestion, because then in your Gateway PUD, under the uses that are allowed in the Park Utility District, it says you can have administrative offices.
That's what we're at, yeah.
So the two things are unclear, and one seems to contradict the other.
We've been there before.
So this would need to have a meeting with the planning and zoning department, with Lee County, to have this clarification.
Yeah, we can't wait for it until we figure it out.
You've got to have the answer to that.
Correct. And so that is our recommendation, that a meeting be held with Lee County to give them both of these documents and have them, you know, have a discussion.
Thinking ahead, thinking ahead, on the basis that they will allow it with some multipurpose capability on the recreational side. What's the next step? Because we talked about that and we talked about these park issues. Does your firm, do they, do you do, let's say, preliminary planning and layout? That would, once we would get consent from the county to do this, we tell you we want 3,000, 4,000 square feet. We want this, we want this, we want bocce.
Yes.
Do we want to plan this and phase it? Do you all do that?
Yes. We would be happy to do that, though.
Have you done this before?
Yes.
Thirty-four years. That's what, that's what we do. We're a land development consulting firm.
How many, how many parks would be, I guess, fallen of parks and rights have you done?
We've had numerous parks. We did Veterans Park in Lehigh. We did a park out at the four corners of Pond Island Road and-
Clemente Park.
So you've got, you've got experience doing this.
Oh, yeah.
But worded a different way. Have you done anything like what we're talking, thinking about doing?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Great.
Absolutely.
Mr. Guy, did you have any questions?
I'm just trying, thank you, Ms. Blair.
I'm just wondering, of course.
Well, until we know exactly what we want to put there.
Mark, whatever question. You mentioned, you know, that gentleman in the front row might just come out of his chair. There was another drawing that you didn't attach that chose a bocce ball.
There was a conceptual drawing. It wasn't something that was approved in Lee County.
If you, where did you find that? We, I don't know that I've ever seen that document.
It's the one that-
Is that the one we found in the upstairs?
No, this is the one from when they were going to do the amphitheater and the tennis courts and-
Well, I thought this-
Or it could have been the one that I modified.
You're not talking about the Johnson Engineering-
Yes.
-debacle of 2003, '04.
Yes, that's what she was talking about.
Chris, did you submit my, my concept along with this? No, they'd already given it start.
You don't even want to mention that in this community.
And we're not going, because we're doing some-
Yeah.
Right. Any other questions?
No, this is great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chris, thanks for listening along. It was really good.
That's a great evening, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
And I think I saw Stephen come back in, and then you have your answers for our question.
Sure do. So the discrepancies on the list, 33 instead of 30, due to transferring it back and forth with track change is on. We just missed two, we skipped two numbers. Mistake on all of our parts. So we actually skipped a number, so it looked like we had more than we did.
So we need to retype exhibit three?
Well, what I would suggest is that there's one, for example, one permit that signs with a three that should not be on there. 060413-120, we'll take care of that. And we skipped from 12 to 14 to 22 to 24. What I would suggest is we just do supplemental letter to the Water Management District.
Any little hiccup, some little- Transmittler-
Transmittler matters, I would pick that.
Transmittler of these 30 whatever-
Yes.
With a revised exhibit three.
Yes. I'm going to take a break while you're trying to-
Do I need to sign them immediately or after?
Actually, the third, actually, the third day I've already signed their scan and they're ready to enter into the district's database after board approval.
So all we need is a motion to approve those 30.
So move.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go, Chris.
That's pretty fast, Bill.
Are we going to hit, so that Stephen can go, any other issues that has to do with Tetra Tech?
I don't see anything here.
The only one I have is the result of the residents raising the question on the storm sewers. Where are we at relative to at least the south side of Gateway Greens on the bidding? Are we out to a bid right now?
You should see our bid specs tomorrow.
The bid specs tomorrow?
Yes.
And then the advertisement?
Can go out and-
Is it ready to go to the paper right now?
Take a week.
It'll take a week?
Well, we have to give four days once we have that to submit it, so probably Thursday or Friday, if you're aware, it's Thursday.
And then what's our advertising period? Three weeks?
Three days.
Three weeks?
Three days.
You don't have to legally do it for thirty days, I think you can do it two weeks.
Seven days, two weeks is, yeah. Two weeks is good.
I thought I heard thirty days earlier.
Thirty days is, thirty days is SRA, SRA requirement. Perfect. That kind of works.
In fact, and I don't want to create a problem with this, but one R sent us a letter, last meeting or the meetings before, about the West Links Lake. Was the West Links Lake included in one of these thirty that we are taking over, that we're operating?
Which, which lake?
I think it's ninety, look behind you, it's the big, one map that's, or the one lake that's on the west side of the West Links, or east side of West Links that cuts up against the school property. They sent us a letter and. January eleventh, twenty eighteen, to Chris, it sounded like to me it was one that was very simple, but I couldn't find anything to find this particular permit, because there is no permit number, to compare it with the ones that we have on the West Links Drive.
We might be able to address that during the break, I've got, we can go look through the number, that Stephen compared the details with the first permit.
Because I know they're gonna come back and hit us, hit us again, where, where does this stand?
Can we keep one o'clock till I'm finished with five? Eight? I may need help. You guys.
Are you meeting for five A?
Yeah, the doubt's about, I think I might.
I don't know.
Well, why don't you come up and do it?
Well, I'd like to get GIS done, it'll only be five more minutes.
Okay, so we're done with, we're done with four A, so we'll do four B.
Good afternoon, Bob Geppert again from Pelican Reserve. I'm here today on behalf of the Ponds Work Group and we would just like to bring the word up to speed to an initiative that we have been referring to for the last two years as our webinar portal. At that end, Philip is here from Pasquale Associates and Dave Place. Dave was originally with GIS. And the mission that we gave then was, this is going early on, is we have done an awful lot of things within Pelican and we wanted to have it immortalized and a document or documents that would be available to our residents to see what we do with all the money we spend. And to that end, with really kind of vague instructions, to Dave Place, we have developed our presentation that's matured to this particular level and I thought it would be appropriate to bring it up to you guys and show you the kind of thing we're doing. So the website, as soon as he brings it up, will start out by showing Pelican, the community of Pelican Reserve. And what we want to end up with, or what you'll be seeing here, is when you click on any community or any street.